We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order at 6:31. You'd like to stand when I have an invocation. Father, a pledge of allegiance. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your goodness to us. We thank you, Father, that you have ordained and sanctioned government. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you in this capacity. We thank you for the families represented here. Thank you for the churches and this community, the businesses. Father, you've done so much to bless us. We pray that we be faithful in our responsibilities and the charge that you've given each of us. Father, we thank you most of all for your son. It's in his name we pray. Amen. Join with me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Eric Schein.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Kendall Stuckey.
Here.
Paula Arred.
Here.
Thomas Evers.
Here.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Here.
Terry Sayer.
Here.
Dean Bitner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. Trust everyone's had a chance to look at these. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by Keith.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Dean Bitner.
Yes.
Terry Sayer.
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Yes.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Paula Arred.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
We'll start our public forum. It looks like it's 6:35. And we'll be looking at old business. Is there anyone from the public here that wants to address anything tonight? No one? Okay. He's got presentation later. Before we start old business, I've been asked to add to new business tonight a presentation by Huck's Corn Maze. I'd like to present that to you at this time so we could add that to the agenda tonight. We'll need to make a formal motion on that.
I move that we amend the agenda.
Motion by Jeanette, second by Eric. So that will be added under new business. There was also quite a bit of information attached to your packet this time, and if there's anything that we wanted to discuss.
Mr. Mayor.
We would need to add that also at this time.
We need to vote on that amendment.
Right. Roll call.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Terry Sayer.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Dean Bitner.
Yes.
Paula Arred.
Yes.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Arred.
Yes.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Yes.
Terry Sayer.
Yes.
Dean Bitner.
Yes.
Dean, would you like to read the title of that ordinance? Is it by title only or... By title only. Okay.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance prohibiting the use of engine brakes in the city of Lowell, Arkansas, providing for monetary penalties and providing an effective date. I would entertain a motion to place on second reading by title only. So moved.
Second.
Dean Bitner and Eric. Roll call, please.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Arred.
Yes.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Yes.
Terry Sayer.
Yes.
Dean Bitner.
Yes.
Dean, would you like to read the title of that ordinance?
Is it by title only or...
By title only.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance prohibiting the use of engine brakes in the city of Lowell, Arkansas, providing for monetary penalties and providing an effective date.
And that's all the old business, right? We don't have a lot of old business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There was one item that's not been brought back up, and that was the roll-off.
The roll-off?
Uh-huh. The trash pickup?
Mm-hmm.
And we were supposed to get a full copy of the full contract so we could review it.
We'll have to have that for you next meeting.
I don't think we voted. I don't think there was anything to vote on that one, if I remember correctly. I think it was just information.
Well, I thought they were gonna at least bring it back as far as what they were gonna present and what the options were and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah. As I recall, the existing contract expires sometime quite a ways away. Is that right?
Yeah, it was several months away.
Yeah.
We'll have that next council meeting. New business. Oh, did you sign that ordinance?
No, it's ordinance assigned number 886.
Do we assign an ordinance?
That was only second reading.
No, that's right.
We don't?
That's second reading only. I'm sorry. Excuse me. New business, council approval of Lowell Board of Zoning Adjustments by laws. And that's part of the lengthy document that you got there. Anyone else discuss any part of that?
Mayor, I make a motion. We accept the document as written.
Second.
Motion by Dean Bitner, second by Keith. Roll call, please.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Arred.
Yes.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Yes.
Terry Sayer.
Yes.
Dean Bitner.
Mayor, just a point of information on that subject.
Excuse me just a moment.
Yes, it's approved.
It is approved.
Yes.
Yes, Dean.
Just as a point of information for those of you who were not here during the Board of Adjustments meeting back on the first, I think the Board as a whole is to be commended. Did an outstanding job on their efforts with the Atwoods folks, and they are to be commended for their efforts in putting these bylaws together. So I would encourage the citizens of Lowell to come join those meetings whenever they can and watch the good work these folks are doing for us.
Next on the agenda, resolution authorizing John Ratsky to represent the city of Lowell at the Northwest Arkansas Conservation Authority, known as NACA, monthly meetings. And John is here tonight. John, would you stand just a moment? Everyone's familiar with John, and he is willing to fulfill this responsibility. John Sampier recently emailed and said, "We'll look forward to welcoming John back." I can tell you that he has been a Lowell conscientious member and represents Lowell very well. Plus, he brings expertise as a retired engineer. And John, we thank you for everything you've done in the past and what you can offer the city in the future. I would entertain a motion to approve a resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
You guys move pretty fast. Who made the motion?
I was excited to see John back.
I think you also. The second was my Kendall?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Paula Arred.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Terry Sayer.
Yes.
Dean Bitner.
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
This resolution is assigned resolution number 11-4.
Resolution 11-4. Third item, resolution of the city of Lowell certifying local government endorsement of business to participate in a tax-backed program as authorized by Section 15-42706D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003, presented by Clint O'Neill, Arkansas Economic Development Commission, for Walker Business out on 264, a Lowell business. And Clint has come up from Conway just to present this, explain it to us a little bit. Clint, there you are. Go ahead and come to the microphone. Yeah, state your name again for the record.
Okay.
And then just tell us what we're considering here, please.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me, Mayor. My name is Clint O'Neill. Work for the state of Arkansas, the Economic Development Commission. Tax-back is one of the incentives that we offer to companies who are new to the state or are expanding. We have a variety of incentives that we use to incentivize companies to add jobs to our state. The two programs that we have approved contingent upon a local endorsement for Walker is an income tax credit program, call it Vantage Arkansas, and a sister program to Vantage Arkansas called Tax Back. Companies must meet a job creation requirement and a capital investment requirement to qualify for Tax Back. The minimum investment for Tax Back is $100,000 capital investment. The application we received from Walker indicates their investment is about 1.25 million. Those funds will be spent beginning in October of last year to December of this year. So these programs would be retroactive back to the start date that they filed the application, which was last fall. The minimum job creation requirement is that a company build in a new payroll of $125,000. So that can be, you know, just a few jobs, depending on what the average wage is. Average wage with this is well above the minimum, and it's actually a, it'll be a new payroll of about $525,000. So they meet the job creation and the capital investment requirement. The legislature in 2005 tweaked the Tax Back program. Formerly, there needed to be an endorsement resolution by a local municipality authorizing the state of Arkansas to participate in the sales tax refund program. The change was that there must be also a local participation. So what the state is encouraging communities to do, to partner with us in economic development, is to pass a resolution that would also refund the sales tax that would be levied on the construction project. So of the 1.25 million, we don't have enough details as far as where they're getting their materials and how the sales tax levied. We don't have enough details to determine exactly what the financial impact of the state or to the local community would be. But the program as stated is it's a, it's basically, you know, I say a sales tax refund, but there's nothing that comes out of the state coffers or the community coffers. It's just foregoing receiving the sales tax on the construction project. The reason that we offer this incentive is the multiplier effect that these new jobs have. You know, once the construction is finished, there's new employees working at the facility. They're spending money locally. They're generating sales tax. This is not a refund of ongoing business activities from the company. It's just the construction project foregoing any sales tax that might be generated, both from the state and from the city.
Thank you, Clint. Do any of you have any questions for Clint concerning this? This is one of the reasons I asked for him to come up. So if you had questions, now's the time to ask. And if we had, you know, a huge lumber company here in Lowell or these types of things, it would address, of course, that sales tax revenue. As he's explained this, it's really not going to come out of any coffer at this point. So I wanted to be sure the council had opportunity to ask any questions of Clint.
So no direct refund out of our current sales tax revenue? It would just only be on upcoming revenues, correct?
Well, yeah, correct. It would be foregoing any sales tax revenue that you would generate if they bought materials locally and had a sales tax liability for their construction project.
It won't physically require Cindy having to write a check back to the state?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're clear on that.
And only related to the building project?
That's correct.
After the building is completed and they're back on paying sales tax.
So this applies to anywhere in the state? They buy materials, correct?
For the state refund?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So they wouldn't pay any state taxes anywhere in the state of Arkansas?
Right. For the building, construction materials.
Right. Just for the new project, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, any kind of ongoing expenses or repairing equipment or any new motor vehicles, they would pay full sales tax for.
Mayor, if I understand correctly, Walker will provide us with all the documentation we need to simplify our life. Is that correct?
May I ask Clint that? Since this is a joint endeavor with the community, will we have access to those records?
Sure. Anything we have.
That's a part of the resolution.
Yeah, it's in the language.
How does, I got a question. I'm curious, because typically when contractors buy materials from supply houses, a lot of times they have a tax exempt number, correct? I mean, someone correct me if I'm wrong, and they don't pay taxes on material when they buy it, then they resell it, the end user pays taxes. Is that correct? So how does that? I'm curious. Knowing the nature of what Walker does, they do a lot of out-of-state work. I don't know if that really applies, but I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah. And it doesn't really apply to their work in other states. It only applies to their building expansion here in the city. The way it would actually work here is Walker does not own the building. They lease the building from a contractor. So, or from a, it's BWB Properties. So Walker is the company that we would like to give the incentive to, because they're the ones creating the jobs. They're the ones making the investment in our state and in the community. So there's an agreement with Walker and BWB Properties that any sales tax liability that BWB Properties has on their construction and building materials, we would refund that, and they agree to lower the lease payment that Walker pays in the same amount.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the resolution as written.
Dean Bitner. Jeanette Lassiter, second. Roll call, please.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Arred.
Yes.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Yes.
Terry Sayer.
Yes.
Dean Bitner.
Yes.
The resolution is assigned resolution number 11-5.
The resolution is assigned resolution number 11.
11-5.
So it is approved.
Thank you for coming, Mr. O'Neill.
He slipped out here. I told him he could be excused immediately.
Seemed to be in a hurry.
He got a long drive. Number four, appropriation of funds authorizing a transfer of unallocated funds for the purpose of meeting unbudgeted expenditures in the police department as specified herein. Joe, you're here tonight. Would you come and explain why we're doing this, please?
Basically, what we're doing is Aaron Powell has volunteered a number of hours for the police department for several years. That was when he was single. Now that he's a married man, he needs to get paid for some of that time that he's donating. So that's why I'm asking for this part-time position. He has been a great help for a number of years, and his situation has changed. And actually, this year is going to be a tough year in the police department. We have two dispatchers that are expecting, so we know they're going to be off for a length of time. We know that one of our sergeants is resigning. It's probably going to take us some time to fill that position. So it would certainly be a big help if we could get this done.
Any questions for Joe?
Chief, I'm assuming you'll use him on vacation fill-ins and things like that throughout the year?
That's correct. That's usually what he's done for us.
All the proper training and equipment's in place?
Yes.
Okay.
He's good to go.
Chief, are there other volunteers besides Mr. Powell?
We do have other volunteers, two other volunteers. They don't put in nearly the hours that he does. We require them to put in 16 hours a month, and that's usually what they do. They both work full-time jobs, and they don't have a flexible schedule like Aaron does working at the fire department.
Are they, is there going to be, is there compensation for those guys now or no, just volunteer time?
Um...
It's going to be like $300 and something dollars in the budget for those two positions?
Yeah, it's like $50 a month, I think.
If I can ask too, and this is something I don't have the answer to, but have you looked into, is there any conflict with contributions to the lock fee pension system or any state statute that would prohibit an employee from working two different departments in the same city? Is there anything getting our way there?
I'm not aware of any. I know that, well, I don't guess I should say in the same city. I know we do have one of our firefighters working in the city of Bethel Heights as a part-time police officer. That's a good question and something that I really hadn't thought of.
I don't want to, certainly don't want to complicate matters for Aaron at all or the city, but if that would affect his pension in a negative light, then certainly that would be a bad thing. Vaughn, do you have any idea?
I don't. Off the top of my head, I don't know. This appropriations memo is not for a particular person necessarily, so...
We can approve this tonight, and then if it does, then they can decide.
Can undo it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, this is just to approve the funds. The only other question I'd ask, Chief, is for the other guys that are volunteers, are you looking in the future to try to start compensating guys on, as they volunteer on an hourly basis? I'm just trying to think, how do you keep guys to keep 16 hours, especially when they have families like Mr. Powell does, you know, wife and whatnot? I'm just trying to think, I mean, is that something we're going to look at in the future to keep? Because I would think, obviously, I think approving this tonight makes sense, but I also think the guys that have been volunteering that are, know the process and have been properly trained to keep those guys on board, paying them $50 a month, 16 hours, probably the next, you know, something else is going to come along pretty quick, I would think. So it's something we probably consider going forward. And I know this year's probably not going to happen, but maybe try to budget for next year to try to compensate other volunteers. Just a thought, I thought out there.
Mike Morris, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Dean, if I may address what you asked.
Please.
We currently already have the inverse of that, of this situation, where we have a couple of people who are, 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 are full-time, who also work part-time, or they're volunteers, they're paid on call. They changed that law a couple of years ago. It did used to be that you could collect lock fees from both entities if they were in the same city. I can't give you a specific date, but I do remember, it's been within the last two years, I believe. That law was updated to allow for full-time one and working at the other side and collecting both, both lock fees. And also, if I may, I want to speak out, but I am absolutely full support of this. Aaron, some of the workers who we are comfortable with, I know are, puts in probably most of the half the hours of work at the fire department, again, with the police department. So you, you have my absolute support for this as well.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the appropriation of funds memo.
Second.
Keith, like a second came from Dean just a little quicker.
Both of us. Dean Bitner.
Roll call, please.
Dean Bitner.
Yes.
Terry Sayer.
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Yes.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Paula Arred.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
This appropriation is assigned appropriation number 2-2011.
Aaron, I know that was against your mother's wishes. I know that was against your mother's wishes. She told me she wanted to be a tuckey, I was being on the police department.
We had approved presentation by Huck's Corn Maze, so we're ready for that, those involved in that. Please state your name when you come to the microphone.
Whit Parker.
Could you say that again?
Whit Parker. Also got some stuff to hand you.
You're resident of Lowell?
I'm moving to Lowell. Okay. Okay, what I'm looking to do is set up a corn maze in the city of Lowell. I believe this is going to be an opportunity to increase a lot of traffic to Lowell, which will bring a lot more citizens from other towns to this city, which should gain a lot of revenue to the surrounding businesses. I'm trying to do this as a charitable corn maze to benefit the police and fire. This is kind of our first slide. Our corn maze is planning on operating September 1st through November 6th. We're going to have approximately 45 days of operation, depending on weather and stuff. We're going to be open Wednesday through Thursday, 2 to 8, Friday, 2 to 10, and Saturday and Sunday, 10 to 10. Setup, management, and cleanup will be done by me and volunteers and paid part-time workers. Slide three. The following would also be run. We've got a pricing structure there. We're going to charge $6 for adults, $4 for kids, 5 to 12 and under 5, we're going to let them in free. All the other corn mazes that I've checked into, they've been starting at around $7, up to $10. We're kind of trying to get it down there Lowell, kind of bring a lot more people in. We can get a lot more money raised that way. We're planning on trying to do a hayride maybe two, three times a week. Silly slingshot, we're going to try to dress somebody up in a scarecrow and let the kids take water balloons on a slingshot and try to, you know, tag them that way. We're also going to try to do something like a build-your-own-scarecrow, where kids can come in and make their own scarecrow and, you know, kind of let them use their artistic abilities to do that. Just another little fun thing. We're wanting to maybe see if, about doing a haunted house. If the fire, police department wants to come together and put a haunted house right there, you know, that would be more money that... would be more money that would, uh, be raised for that. Uh, they don't have to, it's kinda if they want to. We're gonna do a pumpkin patch also, we're gonna try to, you know, sell pumpkins to help raise more money. Um, I'd like to get with Elza Tucker and get some more of the history of Lowell and farming. From what I understand, it used to be a big farming community and everybody's kind of lost sight of that. Uh, nobody really realizes it anymore. Um, my estimated startup cost right now, I'm looking right around five thousand dollars. Um, you know, it, that does not account for the leased property. We're, we're trying to find property in the city of Lowell to actually lease, so it'll be, uh, you know, accessible to the citizens of Lowell. Uh, you know, if we, we'd even like to get the, the people that we hire part-time, we would like to be them citizens of Lowell first. Um, you know, if we don't have any volunteers or, or people that wanna, you know, come in and work for us, you know, that's fine too. But priority would be Lowell citizens first. Um, we believe at this time, we need to sell about eight hundred and forty adult tickets and that'll be the break-even line. Uh, anything after that should be a profit. Um, if, if all goes well, we look minimum nineteen, nineteen adult tickets per day would break us even. Uh, then anything over that would be profit, which would, uh, be split with the police and fire department. Um, the next slide. This is kind of a, an idea of what maybe the city of Lowell may wanna throw in, um, you know, if maybe they can talk some other, uh, places like the Gentry Zoo and see if we can do a petting zoo one day. Um, we wanna do a car show. Harold Sims, I guess, is the gentleman to speak with about doing a lot of car shows in the city of Lowell. We'd like to bring him in and see if he would like to include that, um, also. And I wanna do an antique tractor show. Um, you know, just kinda get people back to the, the founding of Lowell, what it was about. Um, we come up with an idea, uh, for concession stand, we're gonna call it, uh, Alex Nails Tavern. Um, from what I was told, that's one of the first buildings in Lowell, was actually the Alex Nails Tavern, so we could, you know, sell concessions and soda pop and hot dogs and that kind of stuff out of there. Um, now, these are just kind of ideas that we've come up with and figured we'd shoot the idea to you. Um, what we're asking for is a letter of intent from the city to give us permission to conduct, uh, business within the city of Lowell. Uh, and like I said, we, we are gonna give fifty percent of the profits, will go to the police and fire department. And I don't know if y'all have any questions?
When Whit first approached me with this, I thought it was a wonderful idea. I, uh, I and my family, we, uh, drove all the way up to Missouri to participate in one. I took all my kids and grandkids and it was a great, great time. I understand that, um, some of the neighboring cities have started this and I thought, well, maybe Lowell's ready for this, so I thought, let's just have him come to a presentation, discuss some of these things, and, uh, he's here to answer any question you may have. It does have my support.
Well, Whit, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Tom, I think you know who I am. Obviously, you're gonna serve food and you'll have to go through the health department for...
Um, to be honest, I, I don't know, Tom. I'd do something else I'd have to check on. I mean, if, if it's gonna be, um, a, a big ordeal, then I'd say, you know, maybe we'll just stick to soda pop.
It's not a big ordeal, but just, I mean, if you're gonna do a business, I mean, why wouldn't you wanna sell that? I'm just asking, you know, make sure that you would do that, that way that people would be obviously using the right kind of three-compartment things, blah, 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 blah.
Yes.
Also, if you're gonna have these amusements, like these tractor rides, I think that's gonna fall under the amusement and you may have to have the state come in and check everything to make sure it's, you know, when you're operating, it's working in good, good condition.
Yeah, um, right now, I'm waiting to hear back, uh, from an insurance company about what, uh, my insurance liability and, and all that stuff is. Um, they said they'd have to see how this is classified. They just, they just don't know. Um, so, yes, I...
And there's a guy who, I mean, he works all those carnivals, I mean, that comes to town, he's, I think he's based out of Fort Smith, but that's probably you'd have to contact and he would come through and, you know, certify that everything's meets the requirements or whatever.
Yeah, for sure. We definitely wanna do everything safe, cause, you know, my main goal is, is Lowell is more of a family-oriented community. And I really don't think that, that people understand much about Lowell. I mean, Mud, Mudtown days, that's, that's phenomenal, you know, and, um, I just think Lowell needs to be the city that's family-oriented. I mean, you can go to Fayetteville and, you know, there's Dixon Street, but that, I mean, who really wants to take their kids down to Dixon Street? I mean, really? I just think it'd be a really good family-oriented thing.
Whit, what is, what, are you going to have an actual maze?
Yes.
Okay. Is that gonna be done, I mean, are you looking for property with a cornfield that you...
Um, yes, what, what we're looking for right now is a property. Um, we're trying to either find some that we can lease for a reasonable amount, or some that maybe somebody will donate to kind of help the city, uh, with the benefit. Um, I've got the equipment and everything to put everything in and get it ready. Uh, what it'll be is it'll be corn that's planted and then cross-planted, so it's real thick. And then you go in and you cut out whatever design, uh, you want in it. Uh, one of the designs we're trying to come up with is something with a, with a stage coach to kind of represent Lowell. Um, but, you know, we're just, when you get to cutting in it, it's, it comes to a whole lot of, uh, you know, different equations to whether it'll work out on the specific amount of property.
And then you want a pumpkin patch, so you can pick pumpkins?
Yeah, we thought it'd be something kind of cool, um, just to take the kids down there and, you know, let them pick out their own, their own pumpkin. That's, to me, that would be a whole lot more fun than, you know, just going to the store and picking one up.
How much, how much land are you trying to, to find here?
What we, what we would like right now, um, a minimum of seven acres is what we'd prefer. Um, of course, the, you know, the bigger, the better maze we can do. Um, you know, we, we feel that seven acres is pretty close to the minimum that we can get by on.
When he approached me with this, uh, a few, uh, the key places kept, popped up in my mind. Uh, one of the things that, that I told him, I'd love to see it really close to one of the parks. Um, you know, we have the, the Alan Canning Building over here that they do all the, uh, the, the hay up here. And, uh, you know, I'd sure like to see it close to our parks, that way it can piggyback off of it with anything we want to. Uh, I know we have, during this, during the time that he's looking to operate, will be Mudtown days.
No, it's, well, after Mudtown.
It'll be, it'll be right after Mudtown, that's what I'm saying, it'll be piggyback right from one to the other, so...
Is there any one that the board nails?
It's three months apart.
I know, I went to, uh, the one in Cave Springs last year and it was, it was fun. It was, it was, it was really fun. Well, I miss, McGraw Farms used to plant...
I did.
Pumpkins right over here off seventy-one and then they moved way out to P Ridge somewhere and I, I'd like to see something come back to Lowell, honestly. I mean, spend our, spend our tax dollars here, I mean, if it's been, it must've been here. I go and pick pumpkins and take the family and do that, so...
Mr. Parker, I've got a few questions. Um, I'm assuming you'll be collecting sales tax, you'll have a sales tax permit?
Uh, yes, that's some other stuff we're gonna have to look into getting.
Okay. Um, insurance, you mentioned you'll be addressing that.
Mm-huh.
Uh, the looking, I Googled corn maze here, believe it or not. Who would've ever thought Google would be a verb, but at any rate, I searched it and it's apparently, it's a big thing nationwide.
Oh, yeah.
From Michigan to, to Georgia and everywhere in between, but, uh, um, I know that last year, Harbor High School in Springdale, um, had a hay bale maze, um, and I got the delight of putting that thing out after somebody set it on fire.
Oh, Lord.
Which would've been a bad thing if someone had been in it.
Mm-huh.
So I guess my question to you would be, one, assuming this time of year, the corn will be dry and will pose a fire hazard, one thing that all of these sites stipulate is that there's no smoking, absolutely no smoking. So with that in mind, have you come up with any provisions to protect those folks who might be in the middle of it if somebody does something silly?
Um, well, I mean, I mean, that, that is obviously a concern. Um, we're gonna have no po, no smoking signs posted...
Sure.
Before you ever even get close to it. And our plan is to have enough people policing the maze itself that we shouldn't have any, any, um...
Okay.
I really, uh, of course, you know, it's kind of one of them things, you gotta kind of depend on people to do what's right.
Right.
Um, I, I really don't foresee it being an issue. Um, I know the one out at Cave Springs, they, they just didn't have any issues at all. Um, and I feel if, if we have it, you know, kind of within the city, you know, that in itself, people will, you know, automatically think about it a little bit more.
Mayor, I wouldn't have any problem at all, um, giving him a conditional letter of support from the city, um, with the, with the understanding that all these concerns will be addressed and, and that, uh, and it will take care of the folks that, that are your patrons, so I would, uh...
I've kinda made a list of those things, as you've, um, been discussing them, and a letter of intent could include all of the following. Uh, liability, liability insurance, health department guidelines are met, uh, public safety inspection of the appropriate agency, a collection of sales tax, which you would have to have a business permit, uh, with Lowell, and then a absolute non-spunking event.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, do, do you really actually need anything from us as far as approval, or can the city just do this?
I, I felt that, uh, a letter of intent with, um...
The council's blessing?
Council's blessing would be, um, the most appropriate thing, because if we do this, we want him to be successful at this, because this could be an ongoing thing that we, um, build into the events that Lowell, uh, needs to bring the community together. And what attracted me to it mainly is the family atmosphere that this will produce, and I think it would be a huge benefit to, um, um, for us to act together in this and obviously, uh, maybe some of us get involved in this effort and donating our time and volunteering our help to assist in this, so...
Mr. Parker, I appreciate you bringing the idea forward. We're glad to have anything in Lowell that will help the, the citizens, certainly the family idea. With that said, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, uh, provide Mr. Parker with a letter of support, um, as long as those conditions, and not limited to those conditions, but as long as those conditions are met.
Mr. Mayor, we have a question.
Yes.
I might need to add, if I could, I would also...
I learned this from you, Selena, come to the microphone.
My parts are a little bit, then I thought I could slide.
I'm gonna love this. Please state your name.
Selena Rockground, nine seventeen Concord in Lowell. I might also just, um, I, I'm, I'm very much in support of it, but I might also mention that if you do the letter of intent, I, I would suggest including the, um, commitment from, uh, him to, uh, split the proceeds between the fire and make sure that that's in the letter from the start.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be no problem at all.
Thank you, Selena.
Was there a second?
After the, what's the evening, maybe go, uh, split the proceeds after eight hundred and forty adult tickets? Is that what you were saying was break-even?
Yeah, that's our, our estimate right now.
Was there a second yet?
I believe so.
We had a motion by...
We had a motion by Dean Bittner and second.
By Paula Allred. Roll call.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Dean Bittner?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
If anyone knows of any property that he can begin to cultivate and plow, that's the, uh, the main thing for him being successful this year, because if he doesn't get corn in the ground within probably three weeks, this will not happen.
We're, we're gonna have to definitely get on the ball for that.
And, well, thank you very much, Whit.
Thank you.
For your presentation, and we're glad that you've, uh, brought this to our attention and certainly has our blessing upon it. Uh, we have a presentation by Ronnie Breland at this time.
Ronnie Breland, three fifteen Link's Drive. Um, Mr. Mayor, um, I wanna present you to put on loan, um, two items from World War Two. Um, they are army headsets. Um, they're two different order items. They are, as you can see, um, they have the, how you assemble them. Please take that out of the box. And, um, they've never been worn. And as far as I know, there's only two men in Lowell that would know what they are or the use of them. One of them would be Mr. Elzy Tucker and the other one would be Mr. Howard Williamson. Um, I bought these at an auction out west of town. Um, they have two inserts. Now, you wear them as a headset, but they hook up to a radio to where you can go back and forth as, to where people cannot hear you as you're in combat, except for the people that's on the ground. There is two, like I said, there's two different stock item numbers, order items. And as you can see, one is different than the other. I think the first one that he handed out, um, is stock item. I'll just pass this around to the city council. Yeah, the stock item, um, HS thirty dash U M three hundred, uh, forty-four dash twenty-two. And it's, um, a one nineteen B. Now, when you went to order them, that's how you had to order it. Now, the second one is, um, also a forty-four, but it is a class D, which they operate off two different systems and, and logos for your frequency fields. So they're very, very rare. So Mayor, if you would, I want, and if you don't mind, I'd like for you to sign these, and I'm gonna put them on loan to the museum until I ask for them. And either you put them in there or Mr. Elzy Tucker and put them in a lock case, if you don't mind. Uh, since I would put in both of these items on loan to the city of Lowell on this fifteenth day of March two thousand and eleven, and entrusting both these items in the hands of the great mayor, Eldon Long, that he will make sure that they are put in a glass case under lock and key for the citizens of Lowell for the viewing of each item and the handbook of how each item is used during the wartime in each box.
Thank you, Ronnie. There's gonna be a lot of World War Two people that would recognize these, and Harold, could you, uh, come forward? Because you know what's gonna happen now. I'm gonna get you to help me with this, okay? I'm gonna sign this, and then I'm gonna give these to you to, and then we'll get together with the details, okay? How's that? We, um...
Each box, each box has its own label.
Who has a camera that could take a picture of this for us?
Like I said, each box has its own little label right there.
Yes, top of this box.
This back around here?
That's pretty cool.
Looking for the bomb, huh?
Can't see, I haven't seen one.
She's running out of right there.
Yeah, I do.
That's, huh?
That's pretty cool, Ronnie.
Those are neat, Ronnie. I love antiques, so that's, they're, those are cool. And the original mocks, too, that's neat.
That's neat, very cool.
That's neat, very cool.
See him right over there?
I'm not sure.
That's the one they're talking about that were given to the museum. It's a useful, they got it from someplace.
Maybe.
Centerton. No, it's that little thing you see right there. This is population.
Oh, oh, population, excuse me. Okay.
You couldn't put the, this is for people to get on, you know? It's like they must've got it from someplace. Priest, it's already muddied a little bit. But it's just...
Ronnie, I assure you, we can accept that under your conditions as a loan for display at the museum and it will be in a lock case. Thank you very much. Folks, donations like this are greatly appreciated at, at, at your museum. And I still wanna ask a lot of people here that haven't been over, please come by. We have some neat stuff. We added a new display just last week. We were given a, uh, display case that was custom-made for Verlou Fowler. She paid for it. It's been given back to the museum and we have some of her memorabilia displayed in that case. It's very nice. For those of you who don't know who Verlou Fowler was, Verlou Gory Fowler, prominent citizen here in Lowell for all of her life. She was very instrumental, along with Mr. Tucker, in getting the museum started. It's deeply appreciated. Her family, Michelle Graham, mainly, her granddaughter, has donated these items along with several, several boxes of paper memorabilia from, some of it's back from the twenties. We're in the process of gleaning through these donations and collecting valuable pieces of history, not only from Lowell, from newspaper articles, but all of Northwest Arkansas and all of the world at that time through magazines. We have planned displays for some of this, static displays for farm-related agricultural items, collectible glassware, postcards, and there will be several binders full of newspaper articles when we're done. So keep that in mind. Something will be added every month out of this. Also, the family has donated several nice pieces of antique farm equipment, which will be displayed across the tracks in the Stagecoats Building. That is in process. And I understand there's another family west of town who is contemplating donations of farm equipment also. So thank you for your time, folks. Thank you for your interest. Ronnie, thank you.
Sean, would you mind giving us a gazebo report? Give him the microphone.
Mr. Mayor, while he's coming to the microphone, I'd like to say something and it didn't really hit me completely until Harold was, Harold was talking. But I passed a scene today, coming down Honeysuckle, and Bobby, I guess, left. Oh, there he is. I saw Bobby by the side of the road, but more important, I saw Miss Mayberry by the side of the road. And bless her heart, she was picking up leaves out of the gutter. And Bobby was on a walk and he said he couldn't stand to see her doing it by herself, and so he stopped to help her. But my gosh, you know, how old is this lady?
Eighty-five.
She is such a precious gift to this city. And if she can get out and pick up leaves out of the gutter by the side of the road, then we all ought to be ashamed of ourselves that we don't do more. And I'm, I'm including myself right here. There must be something you and I can do as volunteers, not paid, volunteers for our city, for our parks, for our buildings, for our museum, for anything, leaves in the gutter.
Thank you for calling our attention to that, Jeanette. Sean, uh, give us a report on the gazebo.
We had, uh, the museum has been wanting to add a, a gazebo to the property for some time and Mr. Harold Sims was instrumental in coordinating us obtaining a gazebo from Danny and Don Williams, who live out west of town here. And they kindly donated the gazebo to the museum. And just today, we had it relocated to Heritage Park and set up and will be available to use for the public just this week sometime. But I'd like to thank Harold for his efforts in getting that obtained and the street department's work for making it possible to get it relocated.
Thank you, Sean. Um, there were several things included in your packet. Of course, we won't be having any huge amount of discussion on those, but it did include the new census report on use tax distributions. You also have, um, in fact, Dean, would you mind just maybe, since you're chairing that committee, I'll be prepared with maybe a brief summary of that. And then you also have some letters that I have written recently concerning several issues with the city. One of the things that you had laying before you tonight was this new Hall of the House of Representatives Amendment Form. I'd encourage you to read that and get acquainted with that, because this is an amendment that could definitely help due to your perspective on cutting the cost of advertisement for the city on public notices. So that's all put there for your consideration as we move forward with other council meetings. So I'll try to do that each time, kinda let you know well in advance of what's coming our direction, okay? Dean, would you like to report on the Personnel Committee?
Sure. The Personnel Committee met, met on March the first. It was a, a very productive meeting. We covered the first two chapters of the Employee Personnel Handbook. We found a very stable document, something that we can easily work with. There are a few areas of, of interest and concern. We will meet again next Tuesday, the 22nd, at six o'clock in the evening. And I have an agenda for those of you who are on the Personnel Committee, as well as an additional handout on Arkansas Code, so... But if you're a city employee, rest assured, these folks are, are working with your best interests at heart and we're gonna tune this document up just a little bit and, and make it even better for us. So it went very well and, and again, I have a copy of the agenda and a handout for anyone that's interested.
Thank you, Dean. Any other announcements?
Mr. Mayor, I was at the post office the other day and talked with the postmaster and they did say that they're supposed to get a final word by the 26th of the month. And I was just wondering if Mr. Bitner had any report for us from Washington.
Not yet. Unfortunately, I did not get to make the trip to DC, but I promise you, we're still working on it. I have some of my friends and cohorts that are there now, so they are addressing it because the Postal Service is looking at a great number of offices around the state, not just ours. So they are addressing it. And Mayor, if I may, on your, on your bill or your amendment here, if I may, I, I looked it up here, this was referred to committee on the 7th of this month at 3:30 in the afternoon. As I recall, I think it went to city, county, local. Do you have any idea where the Arkansas Municipal League stands on it? Are they in support of, or?
Not at this point.
They're not in support?
No, not at this point, I don't.
Okay. You might touch base with them, they carry a pretty big stick down there and, and if they could shepherd that thing through, it would save the city some time and money, certainly. It's important.
Any other announcements?
I have an announcement. I'd like to tell Don I appreciate his department getting the graffiti taken care of on Adams. And in doing so, I believe they found another building that was to the east of the church, a little brown building that got taken care of too, and it was the very next day as far as the property on Adams. So I appreciate that. And the citizen, if they're here or listening, for covering it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anything else?
I got one more thing if I can.
You have?
This gazebo, we had budgeted in the budget for $5,500 for that, is that correct?
Yes.
So if Harold was able to procure one as a donation, is that money gonna be left in there so that if they need some other issues, they'd have a little extra probably in the future?
Well, we budgeted, I guess we can build another one.
Harold Sims again. Our volunteer group worked really hard the last three years putting on a car show to raise this money. I would really like to see this, since it's already appropriated, since we raised the money, it went into the general fund, then re-appropriated. I would like to see this gazebo built behind the museum for museum functions, as well as the one that was donated to put across the street in Heritage Park, which will also be used for city functions. We plan an Easter egg hunt again this year. We have split it up across the street, some to the south, some to the north, for different age groups. I can see it being used. We have people on a daily basis, if it's warm enough to be outside, they'll park behind the museum, sit at the picnic table, have their lunch. Some come in the middle of the afternoon just to read a book. It's a good place to be, part of Heritage Park. I would like to see us continue on that. And on the same note, we're doing another car show this year at Mud Town Days as a fundraiser for the museum, and I hope the money we raised for it could be appropriated at a later date for another gazebo in Wardale Park.
Thank you, Harold.
You're welcome.
Mayor, if I may, one last thing. Folks, y'all obviously care about the city. You're here for a reason, whether you're an employee or a concerned citizen, we're glad to have you. I would encourage you to contact your representatives here. Understand that we work for you and I would encourage you to come to us, call us, ring the bell. And I think I speak for, for all of us, that we wanna hear from you what your questions and concerns are and we want you to be a part of this. So if you have something on mind, on your mind, either come to the public forum or call us, please. 263 Dean.
One of the things we'll be doing in the future here in the, I guess you call it the Best of Bule or whatever hallway there, we will be putting a ward map out there with each, uh, council member's business card there, so people that come and go can get familiar with their ward and their council member. I think that's something that we need to do. Well, with that said...
One more, one more thing?
Okay.
I don't wanna embarrass her, but I have a guest tonight, Tanya. Wave your arms, Tanya. Tanya is a friend of a friend and she's a government student. And I invited her here tonight to see her, the local government in action. And I would like to challenge each of you, if you would, please introduce yourselves to her after the meeting and let her pick your brains about Lowell, local municipal government.
Thank you. It's an honor to have you here tonight.
Mayor, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Dean Bitner, second by Jeanette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned at...